Everybody, welcome to the May 16th meeting of the Board of Library Trustees. Thank you all for coming. And so everybody has had a chance to review the minutes. Does anyone have any questions they want to ask about the minutes or want to discuss anything that was on them? Okay, so everyone has reviewed the consent. In other words, so does anybody want to make a motion to accept the consent agenda? Okay, thank you, Sherri. Does anyone want to second it? Okay, thank you, Donna. So we'll take a vote to see about the agenda here. So George Michaelik, you are first.
Yes.
Okay, Donna Montgomery.
Yes.
Sherri McLeish.
I in favor.
And me, Marguerite Cummings. All right, so we can just move right along. I got my paper. So, oh, so Kate, you're here this month, so that's great. It seems like it's been a long time since you've been here and you have a lot to discuss, you know, that's been going on and a lot to look forward to for the summer months that are coming up. And talk about the conference you were just on too. So so many things to touch and also your wonderful staff. So we look forward to hearing from you. So the floor is yours.
Oh, okay. Hey, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. So I actually, I was just thinking, I think it's been a full year since I've seen everybody laugh. I know I've seen some people individually in the library and I've talked to a few of you. But yeah, it's a full year and a lot has changed. I was actually just like reviewing my department reports and my, like the stuff I gave Clayton for the annual report. And it is really incredible how things have changed in our department. Most notably, we've, our whole focus in 2022 and in 2023 has been getting families back to the library. We've increased like a ton of in-person programming. And we focus our outreach efforts mostly on teens by getting into the schools and also by getting out into the community even more than we already were. You know, during COVID. So, I mean, it's been an incredible year. Another thing that's happened very happily is the last time I saw you, I was the only full-time youth services librarian. And now I am one of three. Nicole and Dina were able to join us full-time and they started, I think, Dina was August 2022, Clayton, am I right? And then Nicole was September. So we've had a full school year of having two other full-time people, which has been incredibly helpful. It's been amazing what we're able to do now that we have three full-time librarians working in our department. So that was, that's been incredible. And we wouldn't be able to do the amount of programming that we are doing without Dita and Nicole. And they're just such a help. They have so many great ideas. They love to try new things and they're always trying to like improve things and do more. So we've been very, very fortunate with that. Most of our programming this year has been geared towards kids who are like that early literacy group. So people under five, that's one of our strategic priorities in the strategic plan. So we've been really focusing on all kinds of different like storytimes, sensory programs, and even like infant literacy playgroups. We have a lot of parents who, like, I'm sure I said this last year, really had their children during the pandemic and don't really, didn't really have an opportunity to socialize or really do much of anything in a group and are really starting to come back to the library in full force. So that's been incredible and they're all extremely well-attended. We've had actually our sensory program that we run on Wednesdays. I started that and Nicole has taken it over. That has actually been recommended to kids from pediatricians, occupational therapists, physical therapists as something to do, an activity to do that would really help kids become more familiar with different sensory experiences. So that was really incredible when patrons started telling us that they were being referred to our programs by like clinicians, which is incredible. Yeah, so that's been amazing. We also started doing a lot of after-school programming this year, which is in response to the change in the Norwood Public School schedule. If you don't have an elementary school child in Norwood this year, school ends at 2:00 PM for kids in elementary school, which is super early, so people are looking for things to do after school. And so we've been able to start some interest-based programming based on like what kids really like to do. So we've got like a Lego slash construction program where we use all different kinds of building materials. We do a Pokemon program. We've done an art program and we also do a Nintendo Switch club and game club. So that keeps us busy most afternoons and we have been pretty busy. With, I would say the busiest season we've had in children's was the winter. We were extremely busy. Yeah, my friends who work upstairs are nodding because I'm sure they heard all of the noise. But that's okay. We're not like a super quiet library, at least in our department, and that's totally fine with us. What else are we doing? Right now, we kind of back up to the spring. We're getting ready for the summer. We are starting summer reading again, which is super exciting. We're going to be using Beanstack, which is the online software that we use to track all of our reading. We're going to be starting a teen summer reading program, which is really exciting. We used to kind of have middle schoolers lumped in with the little guys, but this year we're going to do like preschoolers and grade school kids together. And then Dina is going to take on a summer, a teen summer reading program and do one with like middle schoolers and high schoolers. And that's going to be like a bingo sheet, whereas ours is based on like how many minutes you read. And I'm sure you guys remember the, you know, the necices that we've done in the past. We're gonna, if I don't know if anybody saw on the strategic plan, my little photo in the camp store. We, we opened up a library camp store and all that means is that kids earn points for as many minutes as they read during the summer and then they can spend their points at the store. So we use our puppet theater to create a store. So we're going to open that back up this year. The teens are going to do something a little bit different. They're going to have a bingo sheet, which Beanstack now offers a bingo module, which is really cool. And I think for every entry that they complete, they're going to get a raffle ticket. Dina is coming up with some really cool raffle basket ideas. And I think our grand prize for all of our summer reading programs are various types of Kindles. I think the middle school kids are going to get a Kindle where that's, it's just like an e-reader and like the little guys will get a tablet. We did that last year and that seemed to be like a, people were highly motivated by that brand. So we'll continue it again this year. What else have we done? So many things. We started Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, which yes, if you're not familiar with that program, that is a nationwide program that is run by all different organizations, primarily libraries. But I know that there are some like early childhood centers that do run their own Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. And it's basically just like an, it's like a reading tracking program for kids or families really with kids under five. And the idea is that it's based on the research that the more words kids hear, the more exposure they have to books before the age of five, the more prepared they will be for school. So the whole point is to encourage parents to read to kids at home. In our program, everybody gets a little tag to start off with and then they collect tags for every hundred books that they read. It sounds like a lot of books, Thousand Books Before Kindergarten. I think some parents get intimidated by the title, but if you're reading one book a night, and most parents we find are reading more, you're going to reach that goal by the time the child is three. If you read three books a night, you can do that goal in a year. So it's really a pretty easy, sustainable goal for people who have kids kind of of all ages under five. So you already have about 200 folks registered for that. And we're going to be doing quarterly events to kind of like, you know, drum up some excitement for it and catch new people as they have babies and people who move into town to register for that as well. And we've been, the schools have been great about promoting that program. We promoted it at the Willett School and Little Mustangs Preschool Academy Literacy Night, which was great. And we've done some back-to-school nights with those two schools as well, and they've been very, very helpful. I'm trying to think of what else is on my list here. Oh, man, so many things. Oh, thanks. Shout out to George and Marguerite for responding to the call, for joining us for the Literary Luncheon. This year, I think, is our 22nd Annual Literary Luncheon in June. Yeah, so if you, if you guys have missed that in the past, it's we just, the library works with the Quokely Middle School, the sixth graders, and we create kind of like an intergenerational reading club where seniors and from Norwood, like senior citizens, and sixth graders read the same book and then they kind of come together, have a luncheon. The kids create a game based on the book, which is super fun. Actually, there's many games. And we need seniors to sit at each table and then kind of interact with the kids, discuss the book, play the game. It's super fun. And so this year, George and Marguerite very kindly agreed to join us. Our book is The Tiger Rising by Kate DiCamillo. She's won a Newberry Award. She's a really well-known kids author and it's a great story. I actually just started it. So thank you so much for joining us. We really appreciate it. And I think, I mean, yeah, we're just getting ready for all kinds of summer programming and it's, it's just been super busy. And the patrons really appreciate all the things that we're doing. We get a lot of notice for being out in the community a lot more. So we're getting prepared for our Pride Picnic, which is really fun. We're going to do that on June 1st. And I'm sure Clayton will have more to say about that. And then also where the library is going to be at Juneteenth, the Juneteenth Celebration, which will be the 17th of June. And yeah, so we've been able to really, really get out in the community and I think people see us and recognize us and that draws people in. So it's been very exciting this year as well. I think that's pretty much all I have. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I mean, we just, we have a lot going on. Oh, Marguerite, you said you wanted to hear about the, about MLA?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so a bunch of us just came back from, if you had come into the library on Monday or Tuesday last week, we, like, none of the department heads or anybody else would have been there. We were all at the Mass Library Association Conference. It was down in Falmouth this year. And Clayton, how many of us presented? Do you know?
I think, was it seven of us went and significantly presented or six of us went and five presented? A lot of us, yeah.
Yeah, and even though Darson didn't present, she was still involved in the internship program, the mentoring program, which is really cool. So yeah, six of us presented. Clayton and I presented along with two other folks on our pride programming and handling, you know, challenges to pride programming and kind of how to build up good community support, which was really great. That was, we got a really great response to that. Clayton and Liz, you guys did your presentation on access to justice, which is really awesome, great service that we now offer. And it sounds like many more libraries are following suit, but like, we were the first.
That's right.
Yep. Lydia, who is not right here right now, but she presented on Library of Things, which if you haven't been in the library, I really encourage you to go upstairs on the second floor. We have so many things for two people to take home, really unconventional, really cool, helpful things for people to use. I'm trying to think. Dina, Dina and a colleague from the BPL talked about deposit collections as a way to meet teens where they are in the community if you have a hard time getting teens into your library. So Dina talked about her collide, her deposit collections that she's done with Norwood High and the Quokely Middle School. So yeah, it was a busy two days. We crammed a lot in.
And then Heath also presented and got the only standing ovation I saw in the conference.
Amazing, amazing presentation on myths and misinformation around trans identities. They got a standing ovation. I mean, their presentation was just phenomenal, phenomenal. If you get a chance to see the presenter speak at all, I highly recommend it. They are a great speaker. Yeah, so it was a very busy two days and like so many ideas to think about. I don't even think I debriefed with my staff yet about all of that because we've been thinking about summer reading. Like I came right back and we jumped right back into summer reading, but we have, I do have some things that we want to talk about. I went to a great presentation on making your current programs more accessible for neurodiverse children and also creating programs that are just for neurodiverse children. And that was just really eye-opening. We have some great colleagues across the state who are doing that work and had very, very helpful practical suggestions. So that was incredible.
Nicole, I would like, Kate, I would like to say that, you know, you did, you know, come into that job, you know, into your position. And you made such innovative changes in the structure, the format and made the children's department such a welcoming place. You really, you really changed the whole structure. Well, you know what you did? You took away the structure. That's what you did. You took the structure away and you made it seem like there wasn't a structure, although you made it a seamless structure. And then you built it from the bottom. And when you say, you know, you were the, you didn't have anybody with you for a while. You did that and that was a lot through the pandemic and that was, that was, must have been just so scary. But you didn't make it look scary. You just plowed right through and you have such a wonderful staff now and you brought them along and you, you know, you're just such a unit now. You're a unified force and each one of you have your own unique personalities that you bring together and it just blossoms. It's like a great big beautiful pear tree in there. It's just like always in bloom. I just, you know, I love going in there and seeing you guys and seeing all the children, all of them playing and all of them reading and all of them interacting. And I love seeing you outside. Yeah, it's just a beautiful thing that you do and all that you bring to the rest of the library and the community. You work so hard, each one of you, but they don't work, you don't work independently. It's, it's a unit. Your work is independent, but I don't know how to say it. It's, it's a force.
I think we're a really good team. Honestly, I really do. We each have strengths and the thing I really like about working with Dina and Nicole is that we each have our individual strengths and they, you know, sometimes there's some overlap, but I think we each bring something really unique and we're also a really good check on each other. So we each have a good idea, but we also have a really nice way of working together to make, to kind of keep things balanced.
And working at the welcoming table at 101 and Susan will tell you that, you know, people came in and they said, you know, we don't really know anything about the library. We only come into the children's department. So, you know, so many families came to Norwood for their first year, hooked up right to the library in and out. They didn't know anything about the other departments and they would say, I love the library. I love the children's department.
So, oh, thank you. Thanks, Marguerite. I will pass it along to my staff. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Clayton.
Oh, I've seen Jordan's hand up as well, so I certainly.
I'm sorry, George, I didn't see.
Okay, no, that's okay. I just wanted also, you know, thank you, Kate, for all your hard work and, and it's really great to be out in the community and to hear people like, you know, even on my street, families that have the young, young kids that they talk about the library in such a way that I see kids that are, you know, very young, four or five years old, and then some that are, you know, early teens, 14, 15, but the way they talk about the library, it's about someplace to go to do different things. It's not that I have to go for school or this or that. It's they look forward to it. And I, you know, really recognize how important it is at, at that early age that, you know, you have the opportunity to, to, you know, introduce them to everything that you do. And especially being able to see you around town and, and, you know, being that, that, you know, welcoming presence. It's, it's, it's really great. And I think it just, you know, obviously we all know how much it really bolsters our image in the community, but also just, you know, how much it means to all the individuals and all the families. So, you know, thanks for, thanks for everything and just keep up the great work.
Doing awesome. Oh, thank you, George. I appreciate that. I once told somebody that like our job at the children's room, we're like the chief memory officers. And so it's our job to create like core library memories for kids. If any of you obviously knew Hope Anderson, Hope was a children's librarian for like 50 plus years and people still come in and talk about Miss Hope. And that's what I want. I want people to come in years from now and talk about us and remember that the library is a really good place for them and for their kids.
Yeah, it's great.
Clayton.
So it's, you know, Kate, thank you for joining us today. I think, hopefully you know, I think you do know what a pleasure I have and how much I just am grateful for your contributions, your leadership in the library, for Nicole and Dina and everybody who helps out in your department. One thing that you didn't mention, which I, you know, because you're so humble is because everyone should know that Kate is the new chair of the Youth Services Section for the state. Did you just know your vice chair, Felicia?
I am the vice chair. Yeah, so I think maybe the previous structure when you were there was that the vice chair moved up to be the chair. But I think now the way MLA does it is that it's supposed to be like individual elections for each position.
Okay.
Yeah, so we have.
And a leadership role for the entire state and is recognized by her colleagues across our youth services, youth librarians across Massachusetts and is helping lead the way for, as an example for the entire Commonwealth. And we, the panel that she and I led at the very end of the conference last Tuesday was preceded by the business meeting for the Youth Services Section, which is always a very vibrant, great group of people. So I'm just, I'm super proud and glad that she's leading our community and providing so many great memories for the people who live in Norwood, but also finding time amongst everything else that she's clearly doing to lead the way for the entire state, to inspire people, you know, much farther beyond than just Norwood. So I think she should, Kate, you're just a shining example of leadership and really the best of what you can do with in the children's room. So, so thank you. It's, it's an honor to work with you.
Oh, thanks.
Congratulations. Okay, Clayton, it's over to you now. All your glorious reports, which worked very well. It was great to read them.
Well, we always have a lot going on and this, this month is no different. When we talk about the programs that are coming out, well, let's see. If I go through reports, personnel report and contract updates, we, let's see. There is not a contract update, although with the budget that was just passed at town meeting last Thursday night, we met with Lisa Ugolero, the head of the HR department, and a contract, an MLU memorandum of understanding is being drafted right now for the union to, because it's a change in working conditions, to add the extra Saturdays and Sundays, which we got approval for. So once that is finalized by HR, it'll be shared with, with Kate as the union rep as well. We haven't even talked about it. That's not the point of this meeting. But I'm optimistic and feel very positive about the future of finalizing that agreement and moving forward. And that reflects the work that the Personnel Committee and that we conducted as a board here. So that's going really well. That's the only kind of contract update and personnel. There have been no changes as of recently, well, no additional retirements. We have posted the part-time generalist librarian position and are in the process right now of conducting interviews for that. I know some, one that happened, at least one happened today and I think one's tomorrow. And there may be a couple others in the future. So we're still, we got some great candidates. We're very excited about the options there. We will be posting very shortly for a part-time circulation assistant to help us out because we know the circulation department has been stressed and there's been some people finding other opportunities. And we know Michelle is leaving. And we also have a draft draft description that it was influenced, obviously greatly by the conversation that we had in the Personnel Committee here. That is currently being reviewed by Town HR and will come back to Personnel, be shared and make sure the union is also in agreement with that. And then that will be approved by the Town Personnel Committee so we can post that as quickly as possible and really trying to, to make some haste on that because we know Michelle is only with us for a short, more period of time. And then our friends in CIRC are going to be, are already feeling the stress a little bit. So certainly sensitive and finding help wherever we can find it so we can all pitch in and make sure they don't feel isolated and alone. So please, anyone who has an opportunity to go by the CIRC desk, let's, we'll all be super careful to be super friendly and an understanding of our stressed-out friends as we work and getting them help and getting some more help there as people, until we can get more people there. But we should always be friendly to the people in CIRC. But those are, that's the personnel and contract updates. On the programming report, there's, I encourage everybody to check out the calendar. Tonight, Concurrent's right now, some people are in the library talking, learning how to kill their lawn. That was a very popular program that had a lot of people signing up for. Thursday night and just two nights from now, we are having the, the second in the, the speaker series honoring Stuart. And that is going to be me interviewing Mitchell Zukoff, or Zukoff, I think you say his name, the author of Thirteen Hours and his most recent book, The Secret Gate. He's a narrative nonfiction writer, was a member of the Globe Spotlight team and is a journalism professor at Boston University. So I'm really looking forward to that. I'm hoping that we'll be able to work with NCM and have it recorded. There's, there's been positive development in that arena, but I'm still waiting on the final confirmation that we will be able to record it. There are still spaces available, so if people would like to register, they certainly can. And then as Kate mentioned, we're gearing ready for the Pride Picnic on Thursday evening, June 1st. We were contacted by friends at Progress Norwood who are very much interested in, this will be the third annual Pride Picnic in Norwood. And it's going to be pretty casual, mellow affair. We'll have a pop-up library, but we've been also reaching out to friends in other departments. There'll be people from, I just confirmed this morning, the Rec Department will be there, the Health Department, the Senior Center. The Police Department will have their special Norwood Police Department badges with a rainbow border that they'll be selling to raise money for the Trevor Project. And there's going to be a bunch of other communities there as well. We sent a press release and I'm not reading the press release right now, so I can't give credit to everyone, but we're super glad. Black Norwood and Juneteenth will be there. The Historical Society, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm sure there's more than I'm forgetting right now. But it's going to be a great event. I encourage everybody to come out, bring a picnic and it'll just be a really fun community event evening on the one to celebrate the beginning of Pride Month. And also working with Officer Baguma and some other community leaders on the Juneteenth Celebration on Saturday, the 17th. That's happening from 12:30 to 3:30 on that Saturday. And we are lining up, we're hoping to have a dramatic production from the high school, but I'm not sure if that's, that, I'm teasing that right now because I'm not sure if we'll be able to deliver that or not. But you may have seen on the front page of the Record that there was a very successful team that did a drama production that went high levels in the state. And if we, if luck prevails, we'll have a reprise of that production on the common on Juneteenth because it's all about celebrating freedom. The theme this year is what, you know, how do you define freedom? What does freedom mean to you? Because Juneteenth, as I think we all know, is celebrating the day that news got to Texas and let people who had been enslaved there know that slavery was no longer a practice in this country. So those are just a sampling of things coming up in the next few weeks that are taking a fair amount of time to pull together, but also very exciting. And we're all looking, there's a great number of folks that are pulling together to make those happen in addition to all the other things that are happening. Maybe we'll hear some more about them tonight. On the maintenance from the repair line, we are still waiting to hear from the Facilities Department when the study on the pre-existing conditions will be conducted. I did see Chris this morning and I've been talking to Paul. And the head of the Purchasing Department, Kathy Carney, retired a couple of weeks ago was her last day. And there were a few things that, that are still outstanding that need attention and that study is one of them. So I'm hoping and looking forward to seeing some movement on that soon. Money has been dedicated to do that study, but it needs to go out for an RFP to conduct it. So as soon as I have information on that, I will certainly share it. We do have progress. If, if you recall, we had many donations come in in memory of Judy's Iraqi and a bench is going to be installed in her honor that was purchased by, in memory for her. And our friends in the Facilities Department worked with a third-party contractor and had some bricks laid in front of the library right next to the flagpole so that there'll be a little, there's a little punch out now so that where the bench will be installed. So if you haven't seen that yet, that was just installed, the bricks were just installed last week. So it's looking really good and I expect the bench in the next week or two. I don't have a date yet when this bench will actually be delivered. And at some point, we will have a, some kind of installation unveiling ceremony, but there's going to be some services for Judy. My understanding is sometime in August and we're still working with her family and her, her husband to see what's going to work best in her, her memory and in her honor. So you can look for future news for what's going to happen there, but it's going to be a really nice addition. I think it's going to be very complimentary to the other bench that we have in front of the library and a nice place for people just to take advantage of the Wi-Fi and have a moment of, a place to rest and, and just enjoy, you know, being at the library and the grounds a bit more. So it's really nice. The last item in the report's agenda is all about the Friends of the Library and Marguerite. I know that we had the book sale and there's been a meeting since and I'm not sure if Lydia can share anything. She, she's in, I know Lydia warned me ahead of time that she might not be able to contribute and I'm sure that's why her mic is off tonight or her camera. But if she wants to share anything, I said she could also text me anything or put it in the chat. So if she does share anything with me there, I can hear about Friends or anything else. I can certainly bring that to everybody's attention. But Marguerite, why don't you share how things are going with the Friends?
Okay, well, it was a successful, as always, a successful book sale. And there was, it was so successful that they made fourteen, $1,433. And they got some new memberships while they were there too. People joined the Friends. And so, in it, but there were a lot of books left over. So people are contributing a lot of books. I think people, that the feeling was that a lot of people had bought a lot of books during the pandemic and now they're cleaning up their houses and getting, getting rid of them. So anyways, that was one thing. And so they talked about having. So, um, anyways, that was one thing. And, um, so they talked about, um, having, um, uh, once a year, the, um, Friends, um, have a program of their own. So they're looking into that and sometime, uh, over the summer, uh, they're going to do a presentation of their own and that's in the works. But, um, the, um, meeting that was held last month, uh, was, um, well, we see, people came, the board came together and, um, there's a, a nice, strong, uh, collegiality amongst the new board and a couple of new members, uh, will be joining the board soon. And that's gonna be a revitalization of, um, having people on and everyone's looking forward to it. So full steam ahead for the Friends and I'm, I'm really excited for them. So that's about all. The, uh, book sales that are, that, uh, from the COTS, they continue to be a, a moneymaker too. So all of that is good. I don't really have anything else to say.
So I know Lydia did, uh, is, is communicating with me, uh, and, and apologizes for some challenges, technical challenges she's having. Uh, and she reiterated the $1,400 from the book sale, which is great. Uh, and also reminded us about the chocolate and tea tasting event that's happening, uh, in a few weeks. So I don't know if you have any more of the details for that. I don't have those details right in front of me.
No, I don't have the details for that. You know, um, Catherine was working with Liz on that.
Well, we'll, we'll certainly have promotional details for that very soon. So people look forward to that. Yeah. Great. Thank you. Um, correspondence is the next section, if you're ready to move forward to that. There's a couple of pieces of correspondence in the package, uh, some is from the Office for Intellectual Freedom. The American Library Association published a big report recently. Um, I was actually approached by a reporter from the Globe. I was referred by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners to see if we could speak to them about our experiences. Um, and, uh, I, I have not seen that, that story printed yet, so we'll see. That may come soon. Um, but I included a couple of, of graphics that came on the rise of censorship in the last year. Other than the documented and that's something about the thirteen most challenged books. Um, we've had, um, I think great success in forwarding and in protecting people's freedom to read in Norwood. Uh, but that has not been the case certainly across the country. And, uh, we've heard a lot of challenges and we certainly heard about a lot last week. Um, from, uh, the person, the keynote speaker, uh, on Monday morning was, uh, Jonathan Friedman, who was one of the, the, the two authors of the PEN America Report on the Rise of Censorship Across the Country that I shared, uh, a summary of a couple of months ago. Uh, and things have not calmed down. I was just hearing from somebody else today about some challenges to some programs. So, uh, that certainly very grateful for the support and, um, the commitment to intellectual freedom that we appreciate and, and, and value so, so dearly in Norwood. Um, there's some other notes, uh, in the correspondence section, uh, some great praise, uh, which is always fun to share. Um, for several of our staff, the people providing motoring passport services, uh, a couple of, of, uh, very, uh, high, uh, notes of very high praise for, uh, James and people, and, and his help, uh, giving people some tech assistance. And then I did note, um, just to draw everybody's attention in case it feels, you know, kind of got hidden in the, in the, the, uh, the tables, the financial reports that the Nor Women's Club, um, personally dropped off a check, uh, to, to support our museum pass program. And we certainly appreciate, uh, their ongoing, um, and, and, you know, regular support. So, just wanted to make sure that it didn't disappear in the midst of a thick, another thick packet. Um, the last piece of correspondence I haven't included yet, uh, and I think, um, this is actually now a decent time to bring up. Um, I recently was asked, uh, so in, uh, exploring ways to make the most of the Juneteenth celebration, Officer Baguma and I went and met with the Norwood Cultural Council, uh, a couple of weeks ago. And I was asked if I would, um, write a letter of support to, support the development of a Norwood, uh, of a cultural district, uh, in the town of Norwood, in our town. And, uh, I'm certainly interested, but I said, that's really would be, I mean, while I could do that certainly and, and would be happy to provide that support. I thought it might be more meaningful for the powers that be if the trustees were really at the signatory on a letter supporting the, uh, the formation of a cultural district. Um, I had a conversation, um, with Chris, um, one of the members of the Norwood Cultural Council last night, uh, where she explained some more of the ideas, uh, behind it, um, and, and the value that we'll get. Uh, the keynote speaker at the Massachusetts Library Association Conference on Tuesday was Michael Bobbin, who's the executive director of the Massachusetts Cultural Council. Um, and so I had not personally an opportunity then as well to ask him, uh, about, you know, what's the value of cultural districts, what do they do? And he explained, uh, and, and I understand from talking to both Michael and, and Chris, there, there's a lot of different things that cultural districts can do. But really what they, the, the, the biggest thing they do is just, um, solidify and institutionalize the support and the importance of the arts in our community. Uh, Michael last week explained something that I had not been pointed out to me before, uh, which was that arts and culture as a sector of the economy constitutes the third largest sector of the economy for the state. Um, there's a reason we, you know, starving artist as a phrase exists and there still are starving artists in Massachusetts. Um, but it's also a major economic driver. Um, and so it supports, you know, it's, it's frequently seen as leisure activity or something that's just nice to have, which it is, but it's well more than, it's, it's, you know, it's an economic driver. It supports our communities. It makes our lives better and it helps, you know, enrich our, you know, our, you know, our, our business owners and, and the people who work in the arts industry as well. So there's a lot of reasons to support the development of a cultural district, uh, in Norwood. So there's gonna be some more conversations. I think it's really in the beginning stages. I had a conversation just this morning, uh, with Holly with the Conservation Commission and she was, she was at the department head meeting for the town. And, um, uh, Sarah Bouchard, the director was not there, but she's, Holly said that she and Sarah have been talking and are also very interested in, uh, supporting the development of a cultural district. So, I wanted to let, you know, everyone here know about these conversations and see if there was interest in the ad hoc, uh, committee, uh, meeting to, uh, you know, think about what kind of letter the trustees, uh, could send in support, uh, as this develops. I think the timeline that they're working under is to have a proposal for the selectmen, uh, in the fall, in September. So we have a little bit of time. It's really the, the nascent stages of, of this development right now. So, are folks interested in taking this ad hoc committee?
Yeah, definitely. No, it sounds, uh, definitely sounds interesting. I mean, you know, like to learn as much as we can about it, but, um, you know, we, like you said, since we have a little bit of time, that'll be helpful. We can kind of gather some information, then decide to, um, like schedule a meeting and, and like talk about it in detail. But I think that's a great idea to get, you know, if we can get the entire trustee board behind it, that'll certainly, um, help. So.
Sherry, you're on the ad hoc committee? And how do you feel about it?
Um, yeah, I think it's worthwhile for sure. Yep, happy to.
And John's the other person, so, well, I'll speak to him about it too. Yeah. And Donna, you had something you wanted to say?
Oh, I just think it's wonderful and I'm, you know, I just think about it and I think about culture and I'm thinking about all of the immigrant people around and they all have their own cultures too. And just putting that segment into it might be useful. And I just like, think it's a wonderful idea.
Okay, so, uh, I guess, uh, just get John on board in the ad hoc committee. You can just, you could just pencil them in and they'll, yep, I think that's fine. That's excellent.
Well, and that's a natural segue. As we talk about old business, the next is on trustee committees. There have been no, as, as far as I know, no other committee activities, uh, since we last met. Um, but this is great. We can take this and we'll, we, we will take that and run with it. So, thank you. Patrons in the library is the next piece under old, old business. There was one situation in the last, uh, month, which I, I spoke about the last time we met. Um, that person who, um, had been using the bathrooms inappropriately didn't return to the library. And I happened to be there, uh, when he came in and was able to work and, and issue him a, a notice that he needed to, uh, needs to stay away from the library for 30 days, but will have a chance to, uh, come back after 30 days and as long as he uses bathrooms appropriately and doesn't, um, you know, and, and has cleaned himself, then he will be, we will be happy to have him back in the library. So, he had known about town. I've, uh, talked to a, a couple of other people who are, um, uh, service providers in town. Uh, and I'm hoping that we can, uh, help get, uh, some help to direct it to that individual. Uh, it's, it's a concerning case whenever we have to go about that, but, um, everybody is, is handling it, I think, as compassionately as, as possible for a challenging situation. Uh, next item is the board meeting schedule. Uh, we have one more meeting scheduled this year. Uh, this, this calendar year, or I don't know, this fiscal year, I guess would be, which would be our June meeting. Um, and there's a question about, uh, I think whether we want to meet in person or if we want to meet again on Zoom. That's really the question for tonight. Um, I'm happy to support either. I, Don, I know you were mentioning to me earlier that you're all kind of done with Zoom, which I can appreciate. Uh, I think many of us are tired with the Zoom format and it's much nicer to see each other in person. Um, so, but there's obviously advantages for people that are running around and about town or, or creating, you know, cooking dinner just before. There, there's obviously advantages to meeting, uh, um, uh, on Zoom or on GoToMeeting, uh, Google Meeting as we're doing now. The other thing is I know I was talking to Liz earlier today and there's a definitely rising pressure on demand for the Simone room. So when we do next meet, uh, if we choose to meet in person, I would request that we meet in the trustee's room. Uh, so we're not taking the entire Simone room. And, and as we know, even tonight, there's an event, a program that's happening in the Simone room. So, what would people like to do when we're in June?
Yeah, I, I'm, yeah, I'm, uh, in person is, would be great. Um, yes, I, I've had my fill of Zoom. So anything, any chance to meet in person, yes, I will happily. But again, if, if that's not to everyone else's liking, hey, I'm always here. So.
Sherry?
Yeah, I'm flexible. It doesn't matter.
Okay. And yeah, I, I would like to, I'd like to be with my peeps. I'd like to be, I'd like to be together with everybody in the Simone, in the trustee's room is fine.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, then let's plan on meeting in person, uh, in for the June meeting. That sounds good.
I think that, you know, uh, there is definitely a time and place for, um, this virtual meeting, especially in the winter. And, uh, you know, so you don't have to plow out your car and drive and, you know, hopefully for a one-hour meeting and to then drive home. I, I like that, but, uh, you know, I, I don't think that we have to meet in person every single time. But, um, yeah, it'll be nice to see everybody.
That's right.
Great.
There could be nice health benefits, obviously too, which is why we started.
Yeah, when the flu season starts, yeah, we could just keep our distance.
I do get notifications of how hot when the trustee's room is over 75 degrees for two hours or more. And, um, we have not turned on the H, uh, the, the, the air conditioning yet this year. Uh, that's coming soon. So I can tell you right now, we can be grateful if we're here. Even if you don't have AC at home, you may have a window open. The, the ventilation up in that room is, is tough. So, yeah. But it will be, we, we should be able to, to stay cooler when we meet in June. I'm sure we'll have the AC on by then. I'm just looking, I do have a note, I'm sorry to, to, for a callback, uh, but Lydia sent me a note for detail of the chocolate tasting event. It's happening on Monday, June 12th at 7:00 PM. Uh, it's being given, presented by Kim Larking of Classic Creations Workshops. Uh, and she's given other workshops at, uh, several other libraries and has gotten great reviews. So, that's the chocolate tasting event on Monday, June 12th, just to put it on everybody's radar.
Well, that's great. I didn't know it had been solidified. Thank you.
I think that just happened in the last day or two. So.
Thanks.
Um, I was wondering, Marguerite, the next item in the agenda is about the native pollinator garden. Um, I suspect, I know that the Friends approved funding for it. I suspect ground will be broken very soon. Do you know anything more about it or are we just waiting?
No, there was a couple of things about that, you know, um, uh, Colin had given the, um, the presentation on it, which was very well received and she's gone ahead and gotten the plans for it. And then they was talking about, you know, how she was going to be paid and that has all been taken care of. But the other, uh, part of that was, and I was going to talk about it during this phase, was the, um, herb garden, the Friends are going to, uh, financially support that and the librarians are going to be taking care of the, um, herbs. So it's a, it's a, um, as, uh, Kate said, it's a team effort. So, um, I bought the, um, herbs and, um, my husband is taking care of them. And on the 22nd, I think it is, um, Mary Ann Paradis and I will get together and put them in the ground. And, um, we'll see how that goes. And after that, um, it'll start to, um, take root. And then shortly after that, I guess, uh, the, um, patrons of the library can come with their scissors in their bags and start taking the, the herbs home. So that's part of, although it has nothing to do with the pollinator, I thought I'd mention it here. So the pollinator update is that the plans are going to be going through. It's going to take a while. It's not going to be right away. It's slowly coming forth, but you know, just like, I guess it, it doesn't have to stay on the agenda all the time under old business, but, you know, just like the, um, trustee committees, it, you know, it's always going to be something that's in the background. So, um,
Maybe we can have a flower report next month and we can report on what's in bloom. That'll be nice.
Yeah, okay.
And, and for folks.
And I, and I hope the, I, I hope the herbs will be among them.
Yes. Well, I hope the, the herbs aren't flowering. Hopefully we can keep them from flowering because that's.
Yeah, right, right.
We will also have scissors and bags at the desk. That's something we always, uh, have.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And when we, I was, we wear masks every day. I would pinch a little bit of herb and put it inside my mask. It was really nice, uh, just kind of freshen everything up. Don't have to do that so much anymore. Hopefully we can stay this way. That's great.
Donna has something she wants to say.
Yeah. Yeah, dude, that's what they did during the Middle Ages during the plague. They made the mask, but they had a beak on it, filled, filled with herbs. So, traditional, that's what you are, traditional.
Goes around, comes around.
Um, we will be announcing at the June meeting, the winner of the Sastaviska Scholarship. Um, so that's, it will stay in old business. Um, so I'm excited and I wish I could say something, but we need to get together. Marguerite, you and I, uh, and Kate need to talk about, uh, the applicants, but we will have news to share at the next time we get together. So, that is on that. Is there any new business? I have no new business tonight that hasn't already been mentioned.
Well, what about the search warrants?
There have not been any search warrants or any miscellaneous advisories in the last month.
Well, glad I'm sitting down. Okay.
Great. Well, that brings us to the staff trustee remarks. Uh, and we can remind folks, we have the recommendations of things to read, uh, the, from staff and, and I appreciate the trustees who've been contributing. Thank you. Uh, you can always send those to, to Patty or to me, whatever's easiest. Uh, I know Patty's been including folks when she sends her on the spreadsheet every month. So, there is all, always way more to read than there is time in any of our lives. So, don't keep reading something that's not moving yet. Uh, save it for something that, that there's, you, we, Lydia was mentioning a conference or no, who was it? It was somebody else who was mentioning a conference, the rules of, of Ranga Nathan, which is every reader, their book, every book its reader. If you have, if you're reading a book that doesn't appeal to you, keep looking. There's something else that I'm sure will. So, yeah. I think that's all we have, Marguerite, unless somebody else.
Excellent. Well, it's, it's time for hands to fly in the, uh, any take is Sherry?
Sure. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. And that's great.
I was checking it.
Okay. And Judge seconded. Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. It's been great seeing you. Have a great rest of the May.